Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Watertown City Council Meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Please rise and join me in prayer by Pastor Mays Snicker of Mount Olive Lutheran Church.
Oh, thank you. You may not recognize me without a piano, but I'm Mays. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we have so very much to be thankful for in our country, in our state, our community, our homes. I ask your special blessing on those in this room who give of their time and many talents to benefit us. Guide their decision-making. Be present here now. I pray in Jesus' name.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please. Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Hoyer?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Rademski?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Wy?
Present.
Thank you. I would like to note, this is the first council meeting that we've had all ten council members present with Councilman Hoyer back in town, so.
We know what he looks like.
This is what he looks like. No more awkward pauses while we wait to see what he voted.
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Lalum and a second by Wy. Any discussion? Councilman Vilhauer?
I've got to ask a question. I look at F and I realize that our wastewater superintendent's not here. A free lease for a couple tractors? Is there some story behind that or any idea?
Yes. It's, we get demonstration vehicles and the farmers come to see how these things work while we're using them at no cost to the public.
Okay.
And then they see how the machines work and they sell them.
Okay, thank you.
They give them to us for free. So, but it is a lease. We have a lease so that we can have insurance on them and so on. Good question. Any, anything else? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item two is the public comment period and if anyone is here to speak about something not on the agenda, this is your time, so please come forward. See no one, we'll move on. Item number three is approval of the agenda.
So.
Have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Roby. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is the presentation of city debt obligation to the second penny revenue and our finance officer, Kristen Bobzien, will make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we came out of the budget process, there's still a few things that I know the city is looking to do. We talked about bonding for the 1.8 million that was tied to the lofts and then there's also some other things down the road. So with that, sometimes it's kind of, the debt comes on at one time and it's, what can we, what do we want right now? And it's hard sometimes to look into the future. So, Pete, if you want to go to the next slide. So what this is going to do is this is our current debt that the city has and it's compared to our second penny sales tax revenue. It is only the second penny sales tax. It isn't anything else that comes into the capital improvement fund. We do get some intergovernmental revenue. So this is truly just the second penny sales tax with our current debt. As you can see, we're sitting, you know, in the next about five years, right around that 35, 40 percent is dedicated to debt when we're looking at that revenue. In the years past, we have been more around the 20 percent. So with our last 30 million that we bonded, that definitely increased it, but then you can see it kind of tapers off. So sometimes, like I said, we make our decisions and then we don't look what it looks like for the next 20 years because that is what we bond for, is a 20-year period. So if we go to the next one, this is taking into account the debt the city has on the books as of right now and if we potentially would bond for another $10 million against the capital improvement fund. And as you can see with that, we jump up to close to the, go ahead, Don.
Pardon the interruption. Back to the first chart, would you just clarify, does that include the full 30 million or just what we've used thus far?
No, that is everything. So that is the 30 million, that is our other, we have a couple other sales tax revenue bonds. So anything that our capital improvement fund is required to pay, because when you bond, you're bonding against that as your revenue, this is that debt. There's also a couple SRF loans that are tied in there and also the sales tax revenue bonds, so.
I just want to be 100% clear. So when we voted to bond $30 million, we have not used all the 30 million, but this includes...
But we're paying it, yep.
All the 30 million.
It does, yep. So then if we do look at this, the next slide, this would be to add an additional $10 million worth of debt to the city.
Kristen, could you?
Yep.
Councilman Vilhauer has a question.
Kristen, sorry for the interruption and maybe you're going to get to this, but can you explain to those of us watching this right now, including those up here at the dais? This is purely the debt that we're obligated to pay out of our second penny sales tax. Give us a real quick primer as to what else that second penny is used for.
Okay.
And maybe you're going to get to that eventually, so.
That's fine. Yeah, maybe I got ahead of myself. This is truly the capital improvement fund. That is our second penny. The capital improvement fund is set up for exactly that. It is our main capital that we do for the city. It is our street improvements. It is our buildings. We use this money when we did the police department. We did our remodel of the fire station. We also do purchase ambulances and fire trucks out of this fund, but truly it is any improvements that we do, whether it be parking wreck, storm sewer, streets, so really just all capital improvements for the city is held in this.
There's a lot more that is involved in just the debt that we're obligated to pay.
Right. And anytime we take on the debt, we have to back it with this revenue. They're going to look at our sales tax revenue and say, can we take it on? Now, as far as your debt capacity in the city, we have plenty of room to go. It's set up based off of your actually assessed value of property throughout the city. So I think, last time I looked, I think we were around 80 million you could take on. Now, you can see what adding 10 million will do to our level of money that we have each year. And that's really the true question that the city has to look at and that's kind of what this does, is it shows if we take on more debt, how much more each year you're setting aside for debt and not allowing the city to do the road improvements, to purchase the ambulances and the fire trucks. So like I said, if we add the 10 million, basically just the second penny sales tax revenue, you're eating up close to 50 percent of that is going to be dedicated solely to your debt service. The next one is the 15 million. It doesn't look like it's quite a jump, but it does go then up towards the, over the 50 percent would be dedicated towards debt. If you look at these a little bit more year to year, if we were to go out for 10 million more in debt, you can add about a little over $700,000 each year is what we're adding to our payments to pay back those loans. Then if we added the 15 million, your over 1 million is added each year to pay back debt. So that's the, the question really that the council's going to have to ask as we come into this. We will be talking about our long-term capital plan here, probably at the beginning of October. I know we mentioned that we have some other facilities that we need to determine how we're going to build those, if we're going to build them, when we're going to build them. So these are all questions that plays into the debt. Sometimes you're always asked, well, can you afford to build it? Well, as far as does the city have the capacity for the debt? Well, we do have the capacity for the debt, but it's something that the community, the council, has to determine. Do you want the, you know, 50 percent of your revenue to go to pay debt or where's the comfort level there? In the past, we've sat more closely to the 20 to 25 percent. So to go up this much, the city would really have to be willing to probably either think of alternative revenue sources or to know that some of the next five years will be a little bit tight in regards to the street improvements and your current, current options. There's also, the city does an excellent job of setting aside money through our capital outlay process and that's been how we have funded stuff, buildings like the police department and the fire, because we have set those dollars aside. Now, we can lower what we set aside, but I do think that's what's worked so well for us is because anytime you don't have to take on debt and you can fund those projects on your own, the better off you are. So this is just kind of to, a little bit of an informational piece. I know it's been asked, what do we do if we take on more debt? The 15 million puts us a little, that's a little high. The 50 percent would be a little bit high, in my opinion, but with the potential of looking at other revenue sources, it's not out of line, but we just have to know that then each year for the next five years, probably when we're doing our current budget, we'll have to probably make some hard decisions. So, questions?
Right, Councilman Roby?
I assume you used a 2% growth rate on the second penny?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Vilhauer?
And when you say debt service, you're including interest in that, correct?
Yes.
And what interest rate did you assume on the new debt?
I think the average coupon was around 3.7.
Which is still a very favorable rate or rate climate today.
It is, yep.
Councilman Bueller?
Kristen, I have a question. Help me out here, I don't recall. Enterprise funds, can those be dedicated? Can those be allocated towards capital expenditures?
Um, what, what do you mean?
Funds generated by the, by the city, by, you know, like the wastewater and utilities and...
Enterprise funds are set up so that their fees, your hope is that their fees cover any of their operating as well as their future capital that they would need. Now, when they take on debt, because we do, we've taken on some SRF loans through the enterprise funds as well, they also have a ratio of their debt to their revenue that they need to establish. So anytime that they do take on any more debt, then their fees are also assessed to make sure that they can. But those projects, that would be in the sewer and the landfill, those aren't in the capital improvement fund. The only department that really sees any type of transfer from the capital improvement fund for capital projects is the airport fund. A lot of times when you see we do our big projects and we get those grants, the airport can't quite sustain that 5 percent that we a lot of times have to pay. So the capital improvement fund, because it is a capital project, will transfer into cover that portion of the 5 percent. Does that answer?
So the enterprise funds, can they or cannot be applied to debt service?
Not this debt service that we're looking at.
Thank you.
Councilman Lalum?
Kristen, I know you don't have it up here, but the last few years, did you calculate what our actuals were versus what the, the debt service was? What are our percentages based on some of those?
Yep. If we wanted to go back, I can just, I'll just kind of run through them real quick. In 2010, we were about 21 percent. 2011, 22. 2012, we were 20 percent. 2013, we had dropped down to 16. 2014 and 2015, we were at 15 percent of debt to revenue. So, and of course, when we did our 30 million is when we then first saw our jump, 16, we went up to 33 percent and we've pretty much maintained that 40 percent. So you can tell from about 17 on is where we've been sitting a little bit higher on that, the debt ratio.
All right. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Kristen. Councilman Roby?
I just, I think it's important to contrast that, that's building the building, but the other side of the coin is operating the building or the project, whatever it might be. And that's all out of the first penny. And we've had a pretty tight go at the first penny of this last budget process. So this is building the building. The first penny is operating the building. That's a different picture.
That is a, it's a very good point to make, Don. Capital improvement fund is the one responsible for building and the general fund is the one responsible for maintaining. So, and that's a lot of times too where not only do you have to consider the debt you're taking on, but the operation. Anytime you add a new facility, a bigger facility, a change in that, you've got more maintenance, more insurance, more operational, whether it be personnel. So those are all the things that we have to consider.
That's a good point. We are heavily reliant on sales tax revenue for a lot of what we do and the operation of our city is, that, that's the biggest source of money that pays for all of the non-revenue generating departments. So it's important always to consider with new construction, what the load is that's going to be put on the operating or the first penny sales tax fund, because that's the one that's hurting, like you said. We need probably alternate sources of revenue if we want to continue to have the wonderful amenities that we have in our community, because it's, it's not keeping up. So need to keep that in mind. Anything else on this? Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah. I did want to point out one more thing. Part of the reason why I was, I was asked to do this, but I also think it is very important is sometimes when we're up here and we're making decisions about facilities, it's really easy to see the, the close, the proximity to what we want to do. But this too shows what the next 20 years is going to look like and this is the next 20 years without doing anything else on top of it. So it really is something that the council will want to look at and determine your level of comfort for those next, like I said, the next five to seven are going to be the really, the crucial ones, but then anytime we add any more, we got to consider that. So, thanks.
All right. Yeah, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Urban Renewal Direct Assessment Rule, Resolution Number 19 dash 40. Have a motion by Lalum to approve and a second by Bueller. And I'm going to open the public hearing. I, I see that the room is full and probably a lot of people are hoping to speak and I don't want this to take all night. Could you raise your hand if you plan to make a public statement? Not too many, okay. Well, I would hope to wrap this up in a half hour or so, but I want everybody to have a chance to say what they came to say. And so please be respectful when you come to the podium. State your name and try to state clearly whether you are in favor or opposed to the reinstitution of the urban renewal tax and then state your reasons, but try not to be too repetitive. Don't repeat what you say and also you don't need to repeat what everyone else said as well. That way everyone will have a chance. Everyone that wants to have a chance to talk will have a chance. So I would invite anyone who would like to speak for or against this to come forward. State your name, say whether you're for or against and give your reasons.
My name is Tyler Thuringer. I'm here for County Fair Foods on behalf of Jeff and Annette. Myself and Chris, we are for the urban renewal tax. We feel the necessity of the new development in uptown residential and commercial. We feel as family ownership of County Fair over the 30 years, we have paid urban renewal taxes and are 100% for reinstating them. We are for making them 100% for reinstating the urban renewal tax to beautify, rejuvenate the uptown area, making it attractive and productive for everyone to enjoy and bring new business to the uptown area. It is vital for us as a community to embrace new development, to make the uptown thrive and our businesses succeed. Without change and new development, our businesses will continue to lose sales to online shopping. We must give people and families more reasons to come to our uptown. The possibility of the city park will be such an added improvement and will bring people to the area and discover how much the business uptowns, the businesses uptown have to offer. We feel the need to let the community and the council know our thoughts on the urban renewal taxes and the development of uptown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Kay Solberg and I think I represent a lot of people sitting in this room who own businesses, properties that have a hard time even being able to make all the improvements that we need to make within our building, much less paying other tax. I have sat here before and asked what the plan is. Again, there is no plan. When I look in the budget, the taxes aren't even included in the budget. When I looked on the agenda, there is a plan that you have listed here that goes back to We've not been invited to take part in seeing what the plan is and yet we're supposed to be paying money into it. Nowhere else in the city are the property owners asked to fork out money to make improvements within, within an area or a district park. And so I'm not sure why we should be told that we need to pay extra taxes for these without telling us specifically what the plan is going to be. I just feel that, I know it's, you know, it varies according to the size of the building, how much taxes it's going to be. There's, it goes up to $1,500, but to a lot of the property owners, we have, we have probably 25 empty buildings still and I know the development company is working hard at trying to get those filled. We applaud them and we also applaud the loft coming to the uptown. Those things, you know, we're, we're not opposed to work on those things. We know it'll be, you know, a good thing for us in the uptown, but I just don't think that the rest of us property owners should have to make payments, pay out more taxes to be able to have, have them be part of the uptown.
Thank you. For the record, the plan adopted in 1981 still stands unless it's amended and at this point, there are no amendments that are current and so we fall back on that plan, which we think is still relevant. But the council could always change the plan if they want to change the plan, but we, we're under the understanding that the 1981 plan is still valid. And there is a water project district which collects taxes for everyone that has property adjacent to Lake Compeska. All that money can only be used for projects that benefit Lake Compeska, which is a very similar parallel to the urban renewal district. The funds collected from the property owners in the urban renewal district can only be used on projects which would benefit the urban renewal district. And it isn't only urban renewal district funds that are being used. In fact, no urban renewal funds are being used for any of the urban renewal improvements that we're working on right now. And the city at large is funding some pretty grand things downtown and we're excited about that. So just to clear that up. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Jeff Geiser from Clifford's. You know, I really do agree with many of the things that have been said so far. I agree with it very strongly. You know, I live day to day, working hour after hour. There's costs of doing business that are just rampant and out of control and there's so many that we can't do anything about. You know, this year I again have a 21% property tax increase in one hit. That's a bunch of money. And when I hear the urban renewal fee at $1,500, which would apply to my property, $1,500 doesn't sound like much, but $1,500, it takes a whole lot of work and a whole lot of sales to create that additional money. Very difficult to keep your head above water. And like Kay had to say, if there was a great plan in place and there was accountability for that plan, there was documentation where the money is spent and a plan on how the bang for the buck is going to improve the uptown. It's easy to take the money and put it in the bank, but we got to have a plan, we got to have it structured and it's got to be accountable. That's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Others who wish to speak? Please come forward.
I'm Dennis Solberg and I oppose the plan mainly because everybody will be able to use this, whether it's the water park, the streets, the alleys, the public parking, but only us will be paying the majority, the majority of it through, through the urban renewal tax. And I've never seen a program where the government can spend the money better than the private individual on their own property. I've got a wonderful solution to this. Make everybody happy. Those that are for it, let's set up a GoFundMe account. They can donate, put the money into the GoFundMe account. The ones that are against it, they can spend their money on their own property.
My name is Nancy Turbeck Barry. I own the property at the corner of First Avenue South and Broadway. If this assessment were to be used for an individual property and development support for it, I would not in any way be supportive of it. But my understanding is that the intent is to use it for downtown-wide project or projects. I would respectfully disagree with Dennis. I think there's some things that, that people have to do joining together. No one of us will build a park. No one of us will have a splash facility. No one of us will do all the flowers or pedestrian bump outs or all the things that we need to do as a community to make our downtown more attractive. Like everybody, I would rather not pay taxes. I wish that it fell out of the sky. And I also don't agree that the majority of any project is going to be on our shoulders. I know Councilman Albertson, months ago and maybe probably more than once, has said that the city as a whole has to get behind the downtown. And it has and it is and I don't object to having an additional tax on my property to help a little extra, assuming that the city as a whole is going to be, is going to be with us, because the downtown will benefit the whole city and, but we need to do something. We can't expect things to change but refuse to change ourselves. And so certainly I'm, I, I trust that, that the, the projects would be for a downtown-wide or community-wide benefit and the amount gathered obviously will not be enough to do on its own without substantial citywide support, but, but I think we should all buy in and support it and I hope you will support it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Jeff Otto, Otto's Repair. I guess I oppose this plan. I guess I kind of want to go over some stuff here. You guys have any idea how much money you're going to raise off this tax? You must have some kind of ballpark figure.
$71,000 in one year.
Seventy-one thousand, okay. That's kind of one of the questions I have. I mean, I'd like, if, if you do get taxed, whatever, I would like to make sure the money and improvements all go to local businesses, people in town, like the flowers, for instance, I heard were bought in Minnesota.
I don't know. I think so.
Just the accusation I heard anyway. I would just like to make sure if it goes through that, you know, all the local businesses get a chance to get their things going there. And then I'd say like everything's going up, utilities, taxes, and we just don't want to pay a second tax. And it does, it kind of benefits Main Street more than, you know, the, the two end streets and I realize you need extra money to, to do the projects. and I realize you need extra money to do the projects, but I just feel like the Main Street gets the benefit of it. And, let's see, what else I have here? That's just about all I got, and thank you for my nice street up front of my business. I really appreciate that. I don't know who to thank, but anyway, it's awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Greg Blow, and I favor the improvement of our downtown. And I thought maybe I would just add a little history. Five years ago, I believe it was, come November, we held a charrette that discussed, first, we prepared in detail for a number of months, and made sure that all sorts of materials were available to the people who decided to attend. Many of you attended. And one of the consensus opinions of that charrette was that we needed a downtown park. That's one of the things under consideration, I understand, for this tax. And that group, and if you remember, we had stuff all over the walls, and it was on every group's agenda, high on their agenda. Following that, H2020 surveyed the community, and a downtown, a city park was a high priority. Jeff, and Annette Gamber, and I were the chairman of the committee that investigated doing a park. And some of the things that people wanted were maybe a winter ice skating rink. Another thing was a band shell. Another thing was a green space, picnic area, or whatever. All sorts of things that would draw people to the downtown. And those are things that improve the conditions for the commercial people in downtown, and it improves the opportunity for residential development in downtown. We really had a hard time identifying geographic locations. There just aren't very many lots, or pieces of geography that are very big. And it will be a challenge, if we should go forward with that city park, to find that sort of material. We looked right over here at where the utilities thing is, and we thought, boy, that's going to be a great place, and we can do that, and then we found out there are easements against that. And so, there are lots of challenges to try to make a city park a reality, but I think that is one of the things that possibly could be done with this money, that would really not only improve downtown, but be a magnet to draw people downtown, to use the businesses that are here, to be a catalyst in making the downtown more vibrant than it is. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to just clarify one thing.
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay. That I didn't mean that the urban renewal was going to pay for all these projects. We already are paying for a fair share of it, through sales tax, through property tax, and that. We're just going to be, it'll add a burden onto the property owners uptown. I was curious, does anybody here own property uptown?
Yeah.
On the council. You know, they had, a long time ago, the Boston Tea Party that said, "We're being taxed without representation."
You do have two council representatives for your ward, for the ward seat.
But they don't pay taxes in urban renewal.
That is true. Anyone else? All right, thank you, everyone, for your input, and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I think it's interesting to note, the 1981 plan included park-like areas, and we wanted it in 1981. We said we wanted it when we did the H2020 visioning process. We said we wanted it when we did the charrette, and we still want it. Someday, we'll get that park. Thank you, everyone. And now, council, is there any discussion? Would you like to bring any points up? Councilman Albertson?
It was mentioned earlier that I think that the city should, in fact, belong to making improvements. I think right now, the downtown area has done so much, and it's just so much fun to see what's going on down there. And I haven't changed my opinion on the fact that we all should. When we did the H2020, I think there were a lot of us that were there that didn't own property downtown, but believed that downtown is the heart of our community, and I still believe that. We're talking about different ways to raise money in our budget, because we have tough times right now, as you heard Kristen talk about also. It's difficult times. And if we're going to move forward, I think we as a city move forward. I don't think that it's downtown, because if, in fact, that's true, that the taxes are up a lot, we might add on one or two more taxes to all of us. And my question would be, is it really makes sense to go three taxes on people, or does it make sense to make those two appropriate, and then focus on downtown? And if it's a water park, I think that'd be great. You know, if it's a park other than that, it'd be great. I just don't think that the expectation should be, if we're going to improve our community, that we ask a certain group to lead that charge, because I think we all need to be a part of that charge.
Councilwoman Manti?
I guess we all have a different way of looking at how we get things done, you know, and Dan has a way, and I have a way, and I'm sure Josh has a way. And a lot of you mentioned things like, you would be more in favor if you knew what the plan was. And I see things here too about community investment, and right now, if you look at that $71,000, that isn't going to do everything we want to do without additional community support from people outside of the area who are paying taxes, and all those kinds of things. And so, I believe that it is very much a downtown-city partnership, because that's how things are going to get done. We have already made some significant investments downtown. I can tell you that several years ago, I would be one of those people who would say, yeah, you're not getting what your money's worth. Now, I can't say that anymore. We have some really concerted effort on filling buildings, we've got some physical improvements to, please don't hold a camp against me right now, but roads and some of those kinds of things. The park is for sure. So, I guess what I'm saying is, if you want a plan, and you want some transparency of where our money is going, I truly believe that as a city and as a council, working together with our staff, we could absolutely give you a plan that's tied to what your dollars would go to, specifically as it relates to these projects that everybody would like to see, and that we know can be constructed. And I look at it just more of a partnership. Now, okay, why do we have a tax for downtown? Why do we have a special tax for the lake? Because who benefits the most from all the projects from the lake, in the Lake District? It's exclusively spent on the Lake District, right? I mean, and the same thing goes with, yes, the whole community benefits, but what happens is, if downtown is a very attractive place that people are drawn into through the buildings and the parks and the improvements, and we've got people putting a lot of money into buildings and things like that, because they see that trickle effect of, oh, wow, you know, the city did this, or this neighbor did that, you know, that looks really good, we should do that too. And I've seen that happen, and I think to stop now, or to put on the brakes again, we're still going to be looking at a plan that's 25 or maybe 50 years old, and we're still going to be looking for a park, and we're still going to be looking for all those things that I believe we can come together and do this. And I don't know that anybody would argue with me that we couldn't put a plan that directly earmarks this money to something that you could see tangible benefits from in a very short period of time. I guess that's one of the things that, I guess I know that there's a lot of things that have gone on downtown, and we just need to keep that momentum going. We need to plan ahead for more things, and please, understand that we are not asking you to support the entirety of the improvements downtown whatsoever. We are asking you to be partners with us, have skin in the game, and you're already business owner. You're going to benefit from more people coming downtown, more people walking by, people living downtown. The more people that live downtown, the more businesses that will follow. There's a lot of businesses that will go into smaller communities if there's a threshold of people who live there. They will look at that and say, yep, their downtown has this many people living there, so, we're going to put an Apple Store in. I'm not kidding, you know, I'm just kidding about that. But there are groups that'll say, if there's enough foot traffic, if there's enough people downtown, we will locate there. And I think we need to get ourselves there. We owe it to ourselves to not take a look at a plan 25 years from now, and see that we weren't able to even move forward on it right now. I believe that I could look every single one of you in the eye and say that we would do a good job with your money, and that it wouldn't be something that we would just be putting in the bank, or spending willy-nilly. We've got some really good plans, and so, I guess that's my ramble.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoyer?
I guess, my big question, because I work downtown, too. Yes, I don't own the building, but I do work down there, and it does affect our business as well. But, one of the biggest things that I've consistently heard is, and Councilwoman Manti touched on this too, is just the accountability and transparency. I feel most of the folks that, I know I didn't get to everyone, but I did try to talk to a good number of the businesses. A lot of the feeling is just that we want it to be accountable, so we know where those dollars are going, and that touches on what Councilwoman Manti said as well, just, if we were to bring it back, is there a way that we can put some accountability to it so that people know where their dollars are going? No one likes to pay a tax into something they don't actually see where it goes to. So, and I don't know if we're saying, you know, if we're partnering as a city and with downtown businesses, do we look at a direct project, choose that, the city gets behind it, and then we put those dollars to it, and then everyone knows exactly where that money's going, so that they can feel good about it?
That's kind of where I'm thinking.
Exactly. So, just kind of echoing that, other things to consider, I know some folks are wondering, are the non-business structures downtown, are they also assessed? I don't know if I can get that answered.
No.
No, they're not assessed?
Just businesses.
Okay, that's.
Right, Chris. Business owners.
Building owners.
Buildings, yeah. Not residences.
Right, so if somebody owns like a storage building, or just an empty building downtown that doesn't have a business in it, is that still going to be assessed?
As long as it's not a residence, I think, right?
Yes, if it's not 100% a residence, then it is assessed.
Okay, so even if it's dual-purpose, it's going to be assessed?
Yes.
Have we looked at all to potentially making it incremental, instead of just turning the switch back on 100%? Or maybe that's something we need to consider, just because I know a lot of folks getting hit with the full amount right away, that's a pretty big speed bump if they weren't planning for it. And if that's something we maybe need to consider. But again, just kind of showing that teamwork spirit, instead of telling one side and then telling another side. But, just looking at some of that as we go ahead with this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vilhauer?
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, when we look at the resolution before us tonight, the tax rate is .00375, or three-eighths of 1%. If we look at the original document from 1981, that was one-half of 1%. Do we know where that difference came?
I think one of the addendums that we had in the past lowered the assessment amount from the half of 1% to the lower three-eighths of 1%.
Okay.
I'm just speculating, but that was in the resolutions that have been, you know.
Okay, okay. I guess I'll accept that, that makes sense. I guess I'll probably direct this to you, Kristen. What is the timing or the process? Let's say that we were to approve this tonight. What's a process that this goes through relative to our county assessment roles in?
So, if this tax is approved tonight, we do turn it over to the county, and it is then placed on to the property taxes for next year.
Okay. And when does this need to be turned over to the county?
This is our normal time to do it, just because we like to give the county a heads-up. I do believe it has to be done by November 1st.
Okay.
So, normally, this gives us the opportunity to get everything through with the public hearings, get approved, and then turn it over to the county.
Okay. Just a few comments now. I support the concept completely. I'm excited about what's happening downtown, and I want to see that keep moving forward. I don't think it's unreasonable to be asking those that would benefit the most to pony up some dollars, but now, and I also had, one of the parties I spoke tonight said that they look this as investment versus a tax, and I agree with that completely. However, I have some reservations on this. One, we're working with almost a 40-year-old document. I look at this, I'm in favor of it, but the same token, we're working with something that was put together almost 40 years ago. And I don't know if it's time that we look at revamping or revisiting that. A lot has changed in that time, maybe a lot hasn't, but a lot has changed that I'd like to see us consider going back to the drawing board and looking at this. Also, didn't we charge, or we've charged the development company with kind of taking the lead relative to development company matters? Is that a fair statement? Is Chris, I don't want to put Chris on the spot.
He's here.
I guess I will. I mean, is there not an advisory board that you are working with, Chris, relative to your role in this? And I apologize, but I fell in need to ask a question, Chris.
Chris Shilken, Watertown Development Company. That is correct. So, we have established a downtown advisory board. However, with summer being as crazy as it was, we did not meet to address this urban renewal tax specifically. However, we have talked about the downtown park. We do have preliminary plans on the downtown park. We've got preliminary engineer estimates, they're not bids, but it's estimated for the park. And we've also been doing some behind-the-scenes work to get access to the land most favorable for a park location. So, all that has been happening. I'll point out, too, that with the preliminary estimate cost for the park and everything going in there, that it's safe to say that the urban renewal tax would not cover that whole amount. However, there's been discussions about some naming right possibilities to go along with urban renewal tax that could help make the project more affordable from a citywide standpoint, and not rely so much on just the city and just urban renewal, but the naming rights that we've been talking about would really help shorten that gap. One more thing. And two, we have conducted the housing study, and separate from that, we did a downtown study, and we just got the preliminary results back last week, and there are a lot of steps in there, which we've been talking about over the past year, since we've kind of raised our hand and said, we'll take on downtown. All the things we've been doing are laid out in the third-party study that says, this is what you need to be doing, and just doing some research on what other communities are doing as well.
Thank you, Chris. But we, as a council, have not seen that.
Correct.
I mean, I agree with you folks that feel like this is being foisted upon you. I mean, I don't argue that sentiment. I'm in favor of the concept, but I'd like to see us go back, get, you know, get some of the parties that are working on this, get, you know, get some good representation, and... on this, get, you know, get some good representation a- and, and come back to us with a different plan. Uh, maybe it's going to look similar to this, but I, I just feel like we're being a little bit premature in this, jumping into it when, when there are some things being done behind the scenes that I, I think we all need to be aware of, um, and, you know, get, get, get broader consensus as to support on this. Uh, Alexa, I, I'm excited about what's happening downtown. I, I want to keep it seeing, moving forward. I support the concept, but i- in my think, I think it's time to look at revising a forty-year-old document and seeing what would serve us today.
I would agree. The September date really sneaks up on people with their, with the tax renewal every, every September. So I'd say that's fair. Um, one of the things we talked about was possibly doing that is revamping the plan. And we asked in our meeting how much time we have to bring that back. So I, I would not disagree with what you said.
Well, and, um, I know Watertown Development Company is still the same number of employees as it was when their mission was solely industrial development. And now it's much, much broader and they're way, they're doing a lot of more work. And I think they're pressed. And, you know, you could probably use a couple more people on your, your staff. And if you had employees dedicated, if we had a downtown coordinator, uh, that would help a lot. And Chris and I have talked about that, um, adding a staff person who could take it on. Um, it's not like they're short of things to be doing. Right now, the plan does not allow for utilizing urban renewal funds to help pay for a downtown coordinator, but it could be modified to include that. It would include a park. We would not have to modify the plan to spend that money on a park or a parking lot or covered seating areas, walkways. Those are all in the plan. And, um, I think if you wanted a different plan, could certainly entertain it, but if you wanted to spend this money solely on a park, that's in the plan. So you don't need to modify the plan. Even though it's forty years old, it's still valid today. We still want a park. We still want beautification. And that would handle it.
Your comment. I'm gonna just go through a couple of things real quick. Indulge me. I'm looking on this side at the, uh, forty-one-year-old or forty-year-old document, and I too have that same, like, shakes. But we're going to look at this and right now I have the, in front of me, the, um, implementation or plan of action, if you want to call that, that came out of the charrette. And so let's just take the area that's not changed, parking, um, having, you know, improved facilities if needed. Okay, we put in how many new alleys and parking lots are ready so far in the downtown area? We budgeted for several years for an alley and an alley and a parking lot, okay? So we're still meeting that same thing. Um, easy angle parking on Kemp and First. We've got easy angle parking on Kemp and First. So if we continue down that same path with the, um, parking and those types of things, we're going to continue to meet number two on of our, our, uh, plan. Public areas, um, locate two to four restroom facilities. We have those. We could add another one. I think we at least need one or two more. Sheltered seating areas, beauti- beautify with a park-like setting. Okay, so now we're going to look at, um, develop a parking strategy. That's right in the newest one. Uh, establish a redevelopment plan, land use, management. It, we have essentially everything laid out for us right now that, um, is indicated in this plan and we're doing some of it. And some of it, interestingly, has been on our, what if you want to call it wishlist for forty years. And so we're more in a position than we ever before were to, um, complete this. You know, we have a, a short-term, first-year plans. We've got downtown law, you know, we've got long-range plans. It, it, it would not be hard, Glenn. I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying because I looked at the data on that too and went holy-coley. But I looked then at what we've done to date and I can go right down this list and talk about the things that have been done so far and the things that need to be done in, and then they're all, yeah, we could add some bullet points here and we could add some fine-tuned. We could, you know, those things. I guess I'm saying that I, I see this current plan, and I can't call it current, the forty-year-old plan, as still having the same fundamentals, the same thing about public areas, about parking, about, um, you know, the walkways and walkability. And all of those things are in this that were also done from five years ago. Um, so that's, that's the way I looked at it when I kind of looked at that plan and went, ooh, forty years. And then I got out the most current data I had and found that we were on, we were still looking at the same basic ideas that we, we wanted to.
And you, you made me think of something, Beth. Um, the city often applies for grants to do projects. And when the city has skin in the game, we're more likely to get the grant. For instance, for our new bridge, we upped our contribution toward that bridge to encourage the state to give us the funding to replace the Third Avenue Bridge. We're putting local dollars toward that. Um, the bike trail, we're, we got a grant to do the bike trail. We're not asking the state to give us a hundred percent of the funds. We've got skin in the game. And right now, with no urban renewal fund available, a downtown park contends with all of the things that we want to do in our entire community. And we have lots of those things that we want to do, that, uh, we can't do them all. And how we pick and choose, if, if there's a project which has a neighborhood behind it with money out of their own pockets to put toward that project, there's a, uh, much higher likelihood that the council is going to direct those shared funds, which are the bigger part of the cost, toward that project. So just want to plant that seed. Anyone else? Councilman Hoyer?
I guess I would just say, um, in the event that we bring it back, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to point it at a downtown park just because it does address a lot of things. One of the things we're lacking in society today is a sense of community. And the downtown really lacks that kind of every-person space. We do have some small, little areas where you can sit and everything, but we also got to keep into mind that we have retirement homes down there. We have apartment complexes. We have a new one coming in. Why wouldn't we look at, if we are going to bring this back, aiming it at something like a downtown park where we can give a communal gathering space for our residents that are down there? I walk the downtown every day and it'd be beautiful to have something down there that is a part of all of us. Um, that being the case, you know, we could go as far as looking at the businesses that contributed, putting in place a plaque or something that can be there so that you know that fifty years from now, this is how this happened. This is a part of our history. It was established by people that banded together and believed in something and continuing to do projects like that. It gives a safe space for people to play, be with their families. Um, I know that it used to be that the downtown, some people were a little, little nervous about going down there after dark. Well, make it a little more family-oriented, you know? Um, it's looking at stuff like that. If we did a band show with it, great. That gives us somewhere to do Thursday Night Live. City Band could play there. Um, if you have a playground, great. That gives kids somewhere to go during the summer, after school, um, that isn't all over the place. So I, I just think it makes the downtown accessible to families, children, and it can give us a gathering place too for our elderly residents so they can get outside and then they don't have to see a bunch of concrete around them all the time. Um, but it's steps like this where we take our own money and put it in and also collaborate with the businesses that want it as well so that we can build something together that's meaningful and lasting. But we also need to make sure that if we do that, we need to be transparent about it. We need to say, we, we need to basically show that that is how these dollars were used. You know, even if that's paying an engineer's fee, if that's getting greenery, something, just knowing every step of the way so that it is a true partnership versus an opaque wall where your money just disappears into, you know, cyberspace and you don't know where it went. But, uh, looking at it, I think that's, that's something if we voted on it tonight, we just need to make sure it's really clear. And on the old plan, yes, it is super generic. A lot of laws are like that. They're generic for a reason so that you can have a little creativity with how you use them. But again, if we do bring it back, I think we do need to give an assurance of how these are going to be implemented and how they're going to be directed. Giving a physical, tangible thing, I think is meaningful and lasting. There's plenty of projects. I mean, this thing is forty years old. We've been talking about a park forever. We've been talking about streetscapes forever. Just taking those steps forwards sometimes is difficult, so.
We are closer than ever.
Exactly. So I, I think that this would be a great time to pounce on it because I don't think you're going to see momentum like this downtown again for quite some while. And I can speak from working in a business downtown that most of our people that actually come in truthfully aren't local. They're people from outside of town that'll come down to our downtown to, to check it out. And giving it more meaning, more worth, isn't going to be a step backward. It's going to be a step forward. But we have to band together to do that.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Robey?
I, I think Mike hit on the key point and that's momentum. Uh, I think it's important to note that four or five years ago, we voted to disband this tax because there was a lack of direction. So if, you know, don't tax if you don't know where it's going to go. Uh, I think with what's going on downtown, and I like the fact that the WDC's involved that provides some leadership on that, that I think the direction element's being fixed very quickly. That's why I can get behind it.
Thank you. Councilman Albertson?
Uh, just one more time then, just listening to what I'm hearing about all of us that are really interested in the downtown. Uh, Steve Lehner, when he was here from the Municipal Utilities a couple of weeks ago, said that for five dollars a month on our utilities bill, we could raise seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for five dollars apiece would get a great start toward whether it's a park downtown or whatever else it would be. And once again, we would all profit by what's going on in town. It's people coming from out of town. It's people, I, I guess seventy-one thousand dollars to me is a, is a lot of money. On the other hand, seven hundred and fifty thousand for the city to use for projects that might be downtown. It might be, I mean, someday we're going to have ice arenas and maybe we're going to need some extra help on that. Uh, we're talking about all sorts of things. And it would seem to me like it, we would be far better to bite the bullet and ask to put a, ask our citizens of which twenty-five hundred were in the charrettes and in the, and said they wanted us to move forward and we are. But we're moving forward as a community. We're not moving forward as, and downtown is certainly one of them. I think it's great what's happening downtown. It just looks like we really could, we could do a lot more if we would include all of us.
Councilman Bueller?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to ask Chris while you're here, what, what is the role of the WDC right now? As far as, are you coordinating the efforts by the, the board itself? I, I served on that board when I first started nine years ago as a councilperson. And the, the one thing that I saw that, that I left that with is that we needed some sort of a coordinator. We needed an administrator. And I'm not sure what your role is because to me, these things aren't, aren't, in my opinion, are not going to happen unless we've got somebody that's leading that charge, somebody that's, that's in charge of that group. Because for a long time, it was just the members of the, of the board. And frankly, we had a lot of them infighting and things just didn't get done. And I think if, if we're going to do this, I think to be successful, we have to have somebody in that capacity. And I, I would just want to ask what you, what your intention is or how you fit into that coordinating.
Yeah. Um, well, we voted as a, a board as a whole to take on downtown last year when we did our capital campaign as well as with everything else. So, um, but as far as a coordinator spot goes, we certainly need somebody directed just to downtown because right now with Michelle and Tracy and myself, I mean, we're doing all of our other duties with industrial development. Plus, we focus a lot on downtown. I mean, look at where downtown was just six months ago and can, where it's at now. And that was done with the staff that we have plus all of our other duties. Um, and I'm not saying that we need all of it paid for. I mean, the mayor and I talked offline, is that we just need a little bit because we need another person anyway, but we don't need to get involved in all that. So, you know, we raised our hand last year, said we'll take on downtown. Our investors gave us, you know, we raised three point six million dollars our last campaign compared to two based on that plan. Because we did get a lot of feedback, much like the charrette and H two O twenty, that people want that part of the mission for the community moving forward.
And I, and I'll just say a little history too. Um, the person that we had, the last time we had a coordinator for this was part-time. And of course, the budget was established by the board and that person would report on the budget and expenditures, what we needed to do moving forward. But honestly, folks, I don't, I think we've got to have somebody at the helm that attends these meetings, that leads this thing and runs it, whether it's a part-time job or a, or a full-time job. I, I can't speak to that. But I would say at the very least, a, a halftime position.
With a partnership with us, it could be full-time because we have other duties that we could help pay for. And the downtown coordinator could fall under that person's umbrella, essentially being a full-time employee under us, so.
Yep. Councilman Manti?
I guess I want to take this opportunity to build on your comment, um, about how when you did your capital campaign based on, you know, improving the downtown and those kind of things, and you raised an extra how much?
One point six million.
Okay, one point six million. And so that right there shows that there is community buy-in by other businesses that are not located downtown but see the downtown as a priority. Um, yeah, I wouldn't mind paying the extra five dollars too, but I, like Dan said, but we've already got all of those things going, you know, in terms of, uh, taxes and fees and other things that we all pay. And, and anybody else could make an argument that a five dollar or ten dollar or fifteen dollar, I did some math on some of the, you know, monthly payments. Um, there's other people who don't live in the downtown who even, you know, five dollars a month would be a hardship for, but don't they deserve a good downtown too? And, and so we're, no, 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 no. You guys are, no. All right, let's, now, okay. My point is, is that they are not going to have extra foot traffic past their house that's going to increase the value of their, it's not going to increase their income whatsoever by having people walk through past their house. But for those of you who have retail or, or, uh, entertainment or some of those other kinds of establishments, people walking by, people living downtown, people doing all those things are going to directly benefit you. I don't disagree at all with any of the transparency. I think that can be done quite easily. We've got great law, legal and accounting staff. Um, you know, we've got, um, public works department that we could lay it out just like it is. We've got Chris, you know, helping us lead the way. So all these factors that are coming in as we're talking, um, they're there, you know? So I, I just, I'm seeing this as a way to continue momentum and to bring two groups together, me, the city, it, overall, you know, um, and the downtown, provide that transparency, provide that accountability, have leadership, um, and let's get this done so that we're not looking at a forty, forty-year-old plan that still has the same stuff on it that we want right now, but yet have done some progress on it and only in the last couple of years.
Yep. Councilman Bueller?
Just, I want to say, I'm truly, I'm a, a proponent of developing our downtown. I kind of lean towards more what Dan said. I think this should be a community effort. One of the things that bothers me a little bit about, uh, the urban renewal tax is there are, there are a number of businesses in our community that really honestly are not going to benefit a lot. I mean, there will be some. Obviously, you bring more people to town, there's going to be benefits. But there are folks out there that, that, um, you know, if they're in wholesale supply, they're in this district, they're paying for this and it's not really going to benefit them altogether. That, that's just, that, that's a concern that I have. Go ahead, Chris.
Fair statement. I will also, just on top of that, is they need employees. Everybody needs employees. And downtown development is a workforce recruitment tool. Um, the people we bring our offices downtown, so everybody that comes to tour, uh, Watertown, whether it be a business looking to come here or people looking to move here, which we're trying to do, all come downtown and comment on just what's going on downtown. I mean, look at what the Goss and the Lofts and everything. I mean, all that progress. So I'd view, not disagreeing with the wholesale, but if you're looking for employees, look at what the millennial workforce is looking for. And they'll point you to downtown. That is verbatim in the study. It's draft form. You guys will get a copy of that, but that is, uh, definitely in there as downtown is a workforce recruitment tool.
Councilman Holley? Councilman Holley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would say that I think all of us on the council are for uh, the beautification of downtown and the revitalization of downtown. And for your comments, I want that to happen. However, I'm going to be voting no on this because I don't think it should only be targeted at certain people, I think it should be a community-wide buy-in and I think it should be for a specific project listed ahead of time. Now, I went and talked to a lot of the owners of downtown businesses and I heard a lot of stories where they need their own renovations on their own buildings, they need a roof, they need a restroom, they need beautification of the frontage. Now, taxing them would take away their ability to beautify their own building, which would be hurting downtown, so you could argue the reverse, that not taxing them is allowing them more money to tend to their own business factor in their own needs and beautify downtown one building at a time on their own, the private landowner. I guess I would equate it a little bit to a residential, uh, lot, let's say if my neighbor wants to build an addition, you could argue that that addition would raise the overall neighborhood land values, the home values, and I would be for that. You could even argue that it would increase the overall land value of Watertown, but while I would be in favor of my neighbor building that addition, I don't think I should be paying for it, so thanks.
Councilman Bueller.
Just, just one more thing I want to add, I, I mean, think about this, we spend more than this on a front-end loader than what, you know what I mean? In our budget, um, gosh, I, I gotta believe we could, we could support this as a community. Some of the things that we want to do, because I am absolutely for it, but I just, I, I can't, I really, I cannot support this tax on, on people that, um, maybe won't benefit from this.
Anyone else? Councilman Hoyer.
Is there any way that we could push this off? Come back with a real plan that's in place? Well, right, we could do that, but we've done that for four years and this thing comes around every September and we have the same exact conversation every time. So that's kind of the big thing is that if we could just, is there a timeline right now that we're hitting that prevents us from pushing it back?
Yes, November, so yes, we, you could delay your vote and come back with a revision to the plan and the, you couldn't be as specific as the council wants it. If you want to have a committee to work on what that plan would look like, I'd definitely appoint some council members to work on that and then bring a plan back at the same meeting or a prior meeting to voting on the urban renewal tax. That's definitely an option that you could consider.
Because I, I think right now that's a big concern with it. And then that would actually give the business owners full input on it because it affects you and maybe we could actually see some of that collaboration versus us just prematurely walking away from it because we didn't discuss it thoroughly enough due to time.
Right, and we, we did have addendums to, at least two other times to this plan, Chris?
Fair statement. I just don't think that addresses Councilman Holley or Bueller's objection though, is the plan is there, they're just saying that they don't support the tax on just the downtown, so I don't, I don't know what delaying it would just my opinion there.
No, but there are some people that want to see specifically, that have stated they would support it if they knew exactly what that money was being spent for.
Correct, yeah, and we can do that.
And there, there are people that won't support it no matter what, and people that will support it with a generic plan, but if you can get more buy-in from a plan that's more specific, maybe that's the thing to do. Councilman Billhauer?
Actually, I'd like to defer, Kristen had her hand up over there, I'd like to hear her comment first.
Thank you, I had two things, um, in regards to delaying it, I think the longest it could be delayed if it's wanting to implement, um, now for next year, it would be the first meeting in October. And then the second thing I have heard a couple of times where it's been stated, um, not knowing where the funds go and what it's used for. I do want to just clarify though, that when this tax would be done and it's sent over from the county, um, it is placed into its own separate fund. It doesn't go into the general fund, it is a urban renewal fund. Um, all that revenue sits there, there's actually a lot of cash right now for the urban renewal loans, which are revolving loans. Um, and nothing, because there is no budget this year, we couldn't spend it until the council, um, and everybody had an opportunity to say what that would be spent for. So just a couple of points of clarification because I know I've heard about the accountability and, um, as far as timing, so those are my two things, thanks.
Councilman Billhauer.
I, I guess that's why I asked a question right off the bat as far as what the timing is in this because I'm, I'm with you, Miss Michael, I want to support this, uh, in the worst way, but I, I've got a hard time right now without having a little more information before me, that's why I'd, I'd like to know too, if we could, if we could defer, delay this, uh, and if, and if deferring it's not going to make it fly or allow it to happen, uh, we'd have to consider that, but if there is some time yet on this, I, I'd like to see us come back with it a little more information at a, you know, if it's the first meeting in October or whenever, uh, take that route and take a swing at it then.
Well, like Chris said, we've already got some estimates on what the downtown park would cost, we've got some drawings of what it would look like and we've got some work done on a location for a park. We are farther along than we've ever been before on a park and our community wants a park. We have money that we've been setting aside in capital outlay of general tax dollars from people who don't live anywhere near downtown, don't own any property downtown. They've been putting their tax dollars in a fund to pay for a do, a park and that money could be used downtown. Um, there's very likely far more money from the general population if this is implemented than would come from the landowners downtown to build something like the downtown park that we envision. But just the, the amount of money that would be generated would be good faith that showing that they're willing to put their own skin in the game. And so whether you're for or against that, that's, um, just for clarification, the downtown park cannot be built with this urban renewal fund unless we go twenty years or something with it, it's not that big of a fund. So it would require a great deal of investment from other sources like general tax dollars. So it's up to the council, I think you have options, you can vote for it tonight, someone can make a motion to delay the vote until the first meeting in October or you can get it over with right now, it's up to the council. I think we've talked it to death though, so.
Councilman Hoyer.
I'd like to make a motion to defer this vote until the first meeting of October.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Hoyer and a second by Councilman Billhauer to defer the vote to the first meeting in October. Is there any discussion? No discussions, so I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, so this is to defer the vote, right, till the, okay, postpone, okay, so Albertson.
No.
Bueller. Hoyer.
Aye.
Holley.
No.
Lalum.
Aye.
Manti.
Aye.
Rademski.
No.
Robey. Billhauer.
Aye.
Y.
Yes, aye.
Yeah, six to four, motion carries.
Motion carries, all right, thank you. Thanks for coming, everyone, appreciate the public input. Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, council members, if you would like to serve on a committee to, uh, propose a revised plan, please let me know and you don't have to do it right now, but send me an email, okay? I'm assuming the two representatives from Ward C would automatically be on that committee. That would be my intention since it's in your ward, um, and then a couple more, a couple of other people, maybe somebody that's against instituting the tax would want to serve, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I may just offer a quick point in regards to the plan. In my mind, this is, uh, a lot to me like a microcosm of our capital improvement fund where we have general terms of what those capital funds can be used for, but then we get specific and dive down deep and we put together our five-year CIP. Perhaps that's a way to move forward with this, we keep the terms general, but get specific on a five-year plan or a ten-year plan, whatever that might be. It would out-passify some of the landowners' concerns as to what projects are in the hopper and what kind of funds are associated with the expense of those projects. Um, that, that may be one way to proceed here rather than shaking up the whole original intent of the original plan. Just an option, I thought it's raw.
Uh, yes, thank you, that'd be great. All right, um, item number six is approval of airport ground lease with Yost Aviation LLC. Have a motion by Y and a second by Holley. Heath, you want to start this off, I see you talked here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, as you recall, August nineteenth, we had a resolution of intent to enter, enter, into a ground lease agreement with Yost Aviation. Uh, that agreement is before you this evening and, uh, Airport Manager Todd is here to discuss any details about that lease agreement that you might have.
Thank you, uh, so this is a twenty-five-year term. Uh, pretty standard lease, uh, this is for a hundred-foot by a hundred-and-four-foot hangar, a pretty good-sized private hangar. Uh, like I said, twenty-five-year term, uh, sixteen cents a square foot, uh, we go up two percent every year on October first. There is a, uh, picture of where it's going here, uh, so as you approved, uh, two hangers prior in the last council meeting here and here, uh, this one is going right back here on the west side of the first hangar row. Uh, just for reference, Lake Area Tech will be right over here.
All right, thank you, um, are there any questions? Councilman Billhauer?
The, this is the same rate that the two previous leases that we just approved, uh, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, other, Councilman Lalum?
Was this approved through your board as well?
Yes.
Any other council members, Councilman Rademski?
Is it the same length lease as the other ones?
That is correct.
I need to open the public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this, um, public hearing is open, please come forward. See no one, I'll close the public hearing. Is there other council input? None, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Little tidbit, uh, we're at, uh, almost six thousand implements for the year.
Wow.
So, ten thousand should be fairly easy to make.
Great, wow.
Great job, thank you.
That's amazing.
Mayor, if I can ask Todd a question.
Sure.
How, how are things going with, with, uh, the flights and, I mean, have you seen any issues or is everything flowing smoothly with offering the different flights now?
Uh, if you could stop thunderstorms in Chicago, uh, that'd be great. We had about a four-hour delay this afternoon, uh, but it came in about four o'clock and, uh, went out without a hitch, so. Uh, they did a quick turn, about twenty-minute turn, uh, we had both planes on the ground at the same time, they landed about four minutes apart and, uh, they just held out a little farther with the other plane, uh, the Denver route and, uh, turned the plane and, uh, went up great, so.
Good.
Stop thunderstorms would be great.
What was the traffic count going to Chicago, how many, how many people?
Uh, I believe we had a little over thirty today total, uh, between the two flights, I don't know what they broke out to be.
What would you, would you estimate, business travel, leisure traveler, if, if you had to guess on, on that thirty?
Uh, so I would say it's probably seventy-five percent leisure still, twenty-five percent business. Uh, but with that said, uh, we are starting to see some heavy hitters, uh, from the business industry starting to come back and, uh, and we'll really see those numbers, uh, skyrocket, uh, just with a few select people. Uh, you get the million and two-million mile flyers to come back, uh, you're looking at three to five thousand implements that could add, uh, by just those select few people flying, uh, as often as they fly.
Cool.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number seven is the second reading of ordinance nineteen dash eleven, amending chapter three point zero one of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown regarding dangerous and vicious dogs. Motion by Holley, second by Billhauer, and Matt, will you, uh, introduce this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, so over the, over the past year, I've had the privilege of, uh, helping the Animal Control Board craft a new approach to our, uh, dangerous and vicious dog ordinance. Uh, the primary driver, I believe, and the members, Beth or anybody else that's attending can chime in on this, but the primary driver was to give us a more formalized mechanism to, uh, re, uh, essentially euthanize an animal if we believed it to be a threat to the public and and so that, uh, was kind of the impetus and then we took that opportunity to, uh, implement or to propose an ordinance that, um, it addressed not only that, but, uh, it also addressed, uh, the issue of dogs being, um, aggressive towards other dogs, companion animals, that sort of thing, so. Uh, it was able to address a couple of different items as well as put in some protections for dog owners and, and due process and that sort of thing, and so I think we have a a pretty good product here, um, and I would invite Beth or, uh, Dr. Reeve in the audience to chime in if anybody had any questions as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions, council members? Councilman Billhauer?
I asked the same question two weeks ago and I'll ask it again tonight of my colleagues up here and staff, Mark. Uh, any feedback received from any of the members of public on this proposed, uh, ordinance change? Uh, I, I have not and rather surprised at that, but, uh, pleasantly surprised, I will say. I guess that's my only question, I want to, I really want to thank the Animal Control Board and the staff for working on this, I sat in on some of those meetings and there was an awful lot of time, I'm looking at you, Beth, uh, that was spent on this and I really appreciate, uh, uh, the end product on this. Matt, I know you had a big hand in that and Dr. Reeve out there, uh, I really want to thank you for, for bringing this as far along as you have.
I agree, thank you all. A lot of work went into this. Any other comments or questions from the council? Right, then I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Councilman Billhauer?
As long as we're talking dogs, I would like to I, I know it's probably not, it's, it's not to do with this, but we do have an ordinance in the book as far as a leash law in this community. Uh, I had a neighbor that was chasing their dog down with their vehicle the other day, picked it up, and that's not the first time. We have a leash law in this community that we need to remember. We also have a ordinance in the book about cleaning up after your dog. I picked up a pile out by the golf course right by the sign that warned people about picking up after their dog the other day, so. So anyway, I just want to remind the public that we do have some ordinances on the books that we do need to be abiding by, so please do your part.
Thank you. All right, item number eight is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash twelve for the twenty-twenty city budget appropriation. Kristen?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, council. Um, this is the first reading of the budget ordinance for twenty-twenty. In regards to what, we went through the budget hearings, there are a few changes that were placed back into the budget, I'll just cover those. The first one was we did add the fifty thousand dollars to the capital improvement fund and that was for the phosphorus removal study. And then we did add the twenty-five thousand dollars to the library fines budget, um, to increase the, uh, book budget. Um, and then the biggest one is the hydrant rental was placed in to the fire department for a total of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and the street lighting budget a total of $214,000, and the street lighting budget was put into the general fund for $552,000. So that increased the expenditure side on the general fund, $766,000. And then to offset that, I increased the transfer in from municipal utilities from So that is what we went through the budget hearing and was discussed. Now, we know that the transfer is not necessarily set. That is our ask. Their proposal was the $1,097,200. So first reading, we will proceed with this unless there's any other changes, but just to know that based off of what municipal utilities will approve as the transfer in, there is a potential that we will probably have to revisit the budget, so. But we do have to get it approved by the second meeting of September.
Thank you. Council? Councilman Villhauer?
And the utilities will make up their decision. I think their rates and transfer committee is meeting September 23rd, if I'm not mistaken. Their board won't act on that committee recommendation until their September meeting, which will be last Monday in September, so we might have to respond accordingly then at that time. Also, just want to make sure that we understand, the public understands, the budget does not include anything at this point for any kind of street assessment, because we had talked about that, but we have not done anything yet, and also any kind of stormwater tax, nothing is reflected in here, because I know we've talked a lot about that, so I don't want the public confused to think that this is being brought forward with those items because it is not. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilman Albertson?
That brings up a point that Glenn just said. When would that assessment, when would that actually come up then, or when will we decide if we're going to do that? And will that assessment be like Steve Lehner said then, a $5 assessment would raise 750,000? Would that be accurate, or no?
No. He was talking about his customers.
Right.
And no, he wasn't offering that.
No, I understand that. I just wonder how much that would raise, what would that assessment have to be to raise, to raise how much money? If a street assess, let's say we had a street assessment.
We haven't done the math, but what we think that a dollar a foot assessment on each property, which would be about $85 per lot on the average per year, would generate about $700,000. So, but we haven't done the detailed math on that yet, working on that. Councilman Villhauer?
I know this is only the first reading, but is Terry Kelly still here?
He's left.
Okay. Because this was, this came up at our meeting two weeks ago, and the Park and Rec Board discussed this briefly at their meeting last week about the tree saw, for lack of better terminology, the tree saw that had been considered or is kind of on their wish list, that that is not reflected in the park and rec budget at this point, correct?
That, that is correct. That kind of came up, not during the whole budget process that we start with the city, I mean, we start budgeting in May. So I know that was something that, like you stated, Jay, the Parks Director, had kind of brought to our attention. At this point, we just, we didn't have enough time to get it into this ordinance. I don't think it's stopped at this point, the discussions. For one thing, there was the discussion about a position within the city that was necessary. There again, we need to work to get the job description, get a grade on it, figure out the dollar amount to that. So the process has not stopped, but no, none of that is reflected in what we have before you.
Okay. Go ahead, Bruce.
Just to, just to kind of expound on that a little bit, I, because we had discussions prior to that meeting that you're referring to. We're looking at an arborist, you know, the potential for hiring somebody. Apparently there, this gets down to talent like we talked about earlier, there was somebody apparently that Jay Delang felt would be interested in that position that lives in Watertown, that he thought would be fantastic addition for us in lieu of this, this ash borer issue that's coming down the pipe. You know, it made sense. I mean, when we talked about that, it's something I think we really need to look at, and like Glenn was saying, they were looking at a truck and a saw that could really expedite that process and make it much safer than with what we have now for equipment. So I hope we give some serious thought to those two additions.
Definitely. And I, you know, if we do, if we're successful in getting an increased transfer from municipal utilities and implementing some of the things that we've talked about, we might have money in order to do that, and I think that would be money well spent, but they, you know, one step at a time here. That's definitely a need.
Yeah, it's kind of a pay me now or pay me a lot more later, I think.
Right, right. And I mean, if we can squeak that out of this year's budget, I'd even support that if we had the, you know, if we're, our expenditures are down, I don't know if they are. I'm just saying that, something that we should be looking at. Other comments or questions, council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item number nine is authorization for the mayor to sign a stormwater best management practice maintenance agreement for detention out Lot A of Gulfview Estates 13th Edition. A motion by Hollein and a second by Lallem, and I would like Heath to tell us about this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, if you recall, we had this, the plat for Gulfview Estates 13th Edition was on the agenda at the last meeting, and in the discussion, the review of that plat, we also talked about the stormwater best management practices that are in place for that subdivision. One of those BMPs is a permanent detention pond that is currently in place and constructed from one of the previous phases of the subdivision. As those discussions ensued, we did discover and realize that there is not a BMP maintenance agreement in place for that pond, and that was one of the requests of one of the council members in that discussion, that we bring forth a maintenance agreement. A little bit of background on these agreements, as part of our stormwater post-construction BMP manual, a maintenance agreement is required for any permanent detention ponds to be executed between the property owners and the city. What this maintenance agreement does is just talks about perpetuity of the responsibilities for the owner that's going to retain ownership of that pond to continually maintain it so it functions properly, to help avoid residents and properties from occurring any, incurring any damages from floodwaters or things of that nature. So this is our standard BMP maintenance agreement. A lot of the language in here is similar to what you've seen on other BMP maintenance agreements, one of them which includes access language that gives the city the right to access that detention area to perform maintenance if it's deemed that the owner has not been performing it, and we need to carry out any emergency type of maintenance activities. It gives us that responsibility, and then to assess them back those costs as well. If you have any questions on this, we'd be glad to help talk through them.
I'm wondering if the, I see it's Lynn Ford's name on the signature block. Has he taken it to the association and gotten authorization to sign it from Gulfview Estates Inc.?
I know that our urban planner has been in communications with Lynn Ford as the acting agent for Gulfview Estates. I can't speak specifically whether that's been taken to the homeowners association or not.
Okay. Other questions? Councilman Robey?
Just so I'm clear on this, if there's an issue with drainage, the pond affecting the streets, affecting neighbors' yards, as long as the developer's involved, that's the developer's responsibility. When the developer exits the project, then that will be the responsibility of the homeowners' association.
That is correct. This agreement we're entering into today would be with Gulfview Estates Inc. The responsibility would lie with them until a point, they would transfer that responsibility to an association. And, you know, I couldn't speak as to when that, what would trigger that specifically, assuming it would be when their lots are fully sold or developed, and that would have to transpire at that point in time. I would also note that we would typically not take over residential subdivision, excuse me, we would typically take over a residential subdivision pond for city ownership and maintenance, but for the presence of a homeowners' association. In those cases, we typically leave that responsibility on them, similar to what we do for commercial and industrial sites.
I think it's important to note that this is not a new subdivision. This is a subdivision that is almost fully developed and has been platted lot by lot by lot, and that pond has been there for decades, and it's been functioning. So the, the things that we're asking them to do are tweaks to what already exists, replacing corrugated metal pipe with concrete, raising the berm to the design elevation. Those are things that, you know, were contemplated many years ago when the subdivision was first proposed. So this is added assurance. They've been maintaining it. We haven't had a problem. They're going to continue to maintain it, and this is the document that memorializes that. So other question, that was a good call to ask for that, by the way, whoever asked for that.
We'll take credit on that.
Yeah, there you go, Bruce. Other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Is there any old business? Councilman Robey?
Heath?
Yes, Councilman Robey?
Update on Cherry Creek, please.
Update on Cherry Creek. As I spoke last time, our next step is going to be to perform a delineation of that area to, what that delineation is, I threw that term out loosely at the last meeting, but what that is, is a formal determination of whether that is considered a wetland and would be a jurisdictional wetland that would go on that register as such. We dug a little deeper into that, and I've gotten documentation shared with me. Again, this is, comes from the developer to the north. Their consultant has been partnering with us pretty heavily on this because of the benefit of them grading through that area to support their development, and they have supplied me with a determination that was already found to be made from, I believe, 2016. And I've yet, I've got to review that in detail and look at it and make sure it's exactly pertaining to the specific area that we want to regrade, but it looks like the determination has already been made, that legwork is done. It looks like it is a jurisdictional wetland, so the next step would be, if I can confirm that, the next step would be to work with Corps of Engineer and get checkoff and approval for the regrading that we want to do through that jurisdictional wetland.
All right, thank you. Any other old business?
I do have. Just a reminder, I think it's time to remind the public again that Fourth Avenue is not supposed to be utilized by trucks. I've been passing, I come in on that road quite often, home and to town, and there's been trucks going on that road quite regularly. Beth, you're nodding your head, I'm sure you see them too where you live, so might be time to remind and maybe a little more enforcing out there relative to truck traffic.
All right, thank you. Councilman Beeler?
Mayor, I have an issue, and I've brought this to Heath's attention on a couple of occasions, and I'm real concerned about this. It's a 13th Avenue right behind LATI, just east of LATI, or 13th Street, I'm sorry, on right where Second Avenue meets 13th Street. There's a severe dip there, and I don't know how much you know about this, but the neighbors have talked to me about this, where it's become a popular thing to race down that street and try to see if your car can get air. Yeah, and if you go there and you look, you'll see a lot of rubber on the street, and I know it does, it does sound funny, but.
Attractive nuisance.
Well, the, one of the folks adjacent to this has had her mailbox run over three times. Now, we got folks walking up there, and that part of the, of the street does not have a sidewalk, I don't believe, between Third Avenue and Second Avenue. And I think it really is a safety hazard, and I'm not sure how we mitigate that, I don't know, and I know it's a problem, Heath, I know it's not an easy, but I think this council needs to be aware of this as a safety issue, and it's something we really do have to address to try to do something, whether, whether it's a speed bump situation or regrading that and redoing it, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a dangerous situation. The other, another person adjacent to that also had cars on their property as well that have gone over the curb, so I just want, I'd like to see us sooner than later at least try to address that.
Thank you, Heath. You'll look into that? Have you looked into it?
I have, Madam Mayor. If I could provide the council with some background of, as far as our discoveries go. Councilman Beeler is right, it's obvious what that area is being utilized for. You can tell by the takeoff tracks with the rubber left on the road to the skids where the oil pans are hitting the other side of the, of the road. So there is a drainage, what I'll call a drainage swale that is paved into that area that allows the runoff from Lake Area Tech's property to run easterly onto the avenue to the east there. From my understanding from engineering staff is that a project as recent as a handful of years ago, they did widen that, that swale out. It used to be a little bit more severe, a little more aggressive, and they widened that out to try to reduce it as much as they could. I think what that ended up doing is amplified the ramping effect of it unintentionally, but short of, it is going to, it is possible to correct. I mean, we can regrade this area, that will take a pretty extensive regrading to tie into the curb and gutter and extend the street back even further, so it's all the more natural of a dip, so, but we do have to allow that drainage to continue to flow through there. Some other options have kicked around with the street superintendent and police department are, you know, putting in temporary speed bumps that we put out for the spring and summer seasons and fall seasons. We would obviously have to remove those for the winter months. I would suspect that in the winter months, this ramping activity is a lot less of an issue, and maybe that's one, one quick fix that we could, we could contemplate. I normally don't like, you know, as a manager, one of the, one of the managers of the right way, I don't normally like throwing out the idea of putting speed bumps on our public roads for lots of obvious reasons, because of the maintenance impacts that they have. But in this case, because of the safety concern, the necessity to have that swale there for drainage to function, temporary speed bumps may be one alternative that we could utilize. Other than that, getting with police, you know, heavy patrolling that area, things like that are also options that we could entertain.
All right, thank you. Any other old business? Councilman Albertson?
Just for the people watching tonight, I have discussed with the mayor about the ice rinks, and she convinced me that we are moving forward and there will be more information later, and so it is moving forward, so I won't ask you the same question again.
Thank you, appreciate that. Councilman Hoyer?
I know I brought up before the crosswalks downtown. They look great. I don't know what it would take for us to do the ones that are not just on Kemp, but the ones off to the side as well, since that is also kind of part of downtown. I don't know what that process involves. It seemed like the striping was pretty quick, though, and it looks great. I just think it would improve the safety even more if we did it on both sides, just because those are still walkways there too, with high traffic.
Yeah, they're making their way around, painting, this is a good time. Any other old business? I do have some new business that I wanted to just discuss briefly. I will be proposing a policy regarding citizens occupying public property. This has come up a couple times recently. Where can the public be to sign petitions, that sort of thing? What rights do the public citizens have in our public buildings, on our public grounds? The, all city buildings and grounds are owned by the people, and they're open to the public as long as the intended purpose for each place is not hindered, disrupted, or harmed by the public being there. So the policy will state that, and also clarify that with the exception of building and office lobbies, for security reasons, non-employees are not allowed to enter work areas and private offices and to go behind doorways and desks without permission from a city employee. And video and audio recording will be allowed in certain areas, but prohibited outside of lobby areas without permission from a city employee, so. So, someone could ask, and if the employee gave them permission, then they could videotape. Otherwise, people can come in to our lobbies in our buildings, anywhere outside, they can take videos on public areas. But if they want to come into someone's private office, which is a public building, but it's occupied by a private employee, that's not necessarily open to them. We have areas set aside, so the policy will address that. And we also, just to clarify, public grounds are that. They're public grounds, and you have a right as an American citizen of the United States to gather petitions, signatures on petitions. You can do that in public property, just as long as you're not getting in the way, hindering, blocking people, you can't do that. You can't hurt people, you can't, you know, stand in front, and just common sense kind of things. But we don't have a policy yet, so I will be asking for your input on a policy. Yes, Councilwoman Bueller?
Mayor, I did respond to your email. One of the questions you had, there were, I don't know if I should talk about the, okay. Here's my question. If we, if we're talking about city employees, is it possible that a guy from the street department then could say, "Yeah, you can go behind the desk over in HR"? I think we might need to tighten that up to the department, you know, an employee of that department.
Yes, in case we get one of those rogue employees. I will be asking our handy city attorney to make sure it's all phrased correctly. Councilwoman Vilhauer?
I guess kind of follow up to what Bruce, you just said. I think, I mean, you'll be working with the employees, getting input from them concurrently with, as you're drafting this. I mean, it's important that they're all on board too with what we're going to put forth, or what you're going to put forth.
Right, absolutely. And there will be an education process, and I've discovered from the whole request for petitions, right after I told somebody it's their right as a United States citizen to stand on public ground and gather petition signatures. They were called by someone, a city employee, the police were called, and asked them to leave. So, bad on me for implying that, I guess, I didn't know where they were going to go. But there is an education process too for our employees to understand what they can and can't do, what they can order people to do, what they can't, what they really shouldn't, if we don't want to be in a lawsuit. So, we certainly don't want that. We just want to do what's right, so. Is there any other new business? Yes, Councilwoman Holene?
Thank you, Mayor. Since you've given me a beautiful segue into what I would like to talk about, I, first off, I commend you for this policy. I was wondering if I could ask the mayor and the council to at least have some consideration into another policy. Call me fastidious about my previous life, but I view this as a public room, but this is my private office. And as you're just talking about, anyone can go on a public building, but if you're going into someone's private office, that's a different deal. Now, on our desks tonight, we had a handout that attested to a stance on one of these issues tonight that supposedly had lots of people's signatures. There was no one who took credit for that. Now, I don't have a problem with someone wants to drop something off at my desk, but at least take ownership of it. Because if we have a question as to where it came from, the validity of a document, if we want to ask some more questions, I think that's our right to figure it out. So, I think as a policy, I would ask for consideration as far as a policy as to what can or cannot be put on our desks. Because otherwise, I consider anything on my desk as coming from the city. And this document definitely wasn't coming from the city, and it was coming from a, someone who was very interested on one side of an issue, and I think that they need to take ownership of that if they're going to come. I guess I would ask for that same consideration as far as asking for going into someone's private office here. I'd consider this our private office and at least take ownership if you're going to be dropping off documents.
Write your name on it.
Yeah, it's not, I'm not asking for much.
That's all it would take, from Sarah Karen. Yep. That, I agree with you, Reed, that's, I didn't get one of those, by the way. Nobody put one on my spot. Councilwoman Roby?
I just will add to that, the document that's dropped off had a date of 2017. I think it was an old document. The fact of the matter is, when it's done this way with, you know, I discount it.
Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, any liaison member reports? None? We do have a reason to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 to discuss economic development issues, and we do not expect to take action upon coming out. So, I'll look for a motion. I have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Y. Any discussion? Those are just the voices I heard, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.